Can you answer if she can hear herself? She just unmuted.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Bye.
So one thing on... Go ahead.
I just, curiosity, will they have to go back to the historic commission because they've changed their plan?
But they feel fairly, because they've used most of the design elements from the previous plan and materials that... They feel that, which is why they're going to the central ward to get permission for... If you like to do, as well, you don't have to do that. Aside just on the historic app.
Okay, so the question is... Do we accept what the change that Mark has presented, or do we want to use the two and a half story limit as in currently in the general district?
I feel like we should keep with the two and a half. Because we're already allowing more. Or more opportunities for property owners to include more residences and...
I think the other piece, the reason I agree with Sue and... Take the ADUs for a second. The ZBA wants us to revisit ADUs after we pass them. If this becomes the thing that every person, every developer goes to the ZBA, and then it could be modified. And I just feel like it's about scale. And the fact of the matter is, it's not really two and a half stories, it's really two and two thirds, right?
Very well.
Well, I guess, yeah, it's assuming that some portion of the four feet is, that's why, it's because it's not really... Anyway, so I think, I feel like keep scale.
I think scale's really important. And I agree with Sue. I, I think the comments that I've heard are, on the one hand, kind of don't change anything, and on the other hand, we're not doing enough development, right? And so our job is to kind of balance, I think. And I think there's so much in the town center district that improves the current zoning, that that's enough already.
The other thing is, just to add one more thing, is that we are allowing sixty percent by structures, where there's currently only allowed forty percent by structures.
In the general district? Oh, wow, okay.
That's a big, that's a great change. You're allowing a, a building that is half again as big. Right? If it was forty percent of the lot, now it would be sixty percent of the lot.
I mean, the three-story is not unreasonable when we think about the goal of trying to preserve the variety of buildings and their, you know? I mean, zoning came in after most of those buildings were built, so they have nothing to do with current zoning. And so, you know, I, I understand the three stories. It's not, you know, it's not out of the question at all. But I just feel like for right now, we need to stick with the two and a half.
I think it just makes the explanation of what we're doing simpler, and I think that helps.
Okay, so anybody gonna... So we'll go to the two and a half stories?
Gordon, what do you think?
Anybody? Everybody okay with that for now? We'll keep it as a...
I think it's a good idea, and I'm...
Bringing around this.
Yeah, don't try to.
I, I'm glad Mark raised it.
Yeah, yeah, I am too.
It's a really, I think it's an important issue. And it will be interesting to see how people will bond to all of this.
Okay. Great. Any other comments on the zones? So Mark, you're gonna make those changes and put the new draft up on that? Just make sure that everything says draft and is... Okay, so, um... The next topic is the plan for the December fourth public forum. Sue and I did meet and have prepared a, an outline for a presentation. It's a work in progress. We also talked about trying to have people, a number of people speak, so that it's not just one talking head. And I think what we'll do is divide it up and, and, yeah, you know, talk to you and sign things digitally. I don't think we need to spend too much time now, unless somebody has, uh, doesn't want to, uh... Okay. If somebody doesn't want to speak, that's certainly fine, too.
Um, my plea is that I hope we can do the presentat... So we're calling it a forum. So that gives people an expectation about a level of interactivity.
Yes.
And so if there's a way to do the presentation in chunks, so that there's a chunk, you know, that's a five or ten minutes of presenting, and then there's another five plus minutes of a little back and forth. And then, you know, and then to, to contain it by saying, well, there'll be more of this afterwards, blah, blah, blah. And then you go on to the next piece of the presentation. Because as, as a citizen...
Too much talking is...
It's too much, right. And it, and it also, it used to make me berserk to go to meetings and have to wait until the very end to make my comments, when I've, everyone had, the discussion had moved on and it was, anyway. So if there's a way to do the presentation a way that allows for commentary and interaction as you go along a bit, that I...
I agree with you, because it's a forum. On the other hand, it's a bit of level setting that kind of you need to do to under... You kind of need to understand it in its totality to have things. So the way we've structured is sort of the what and why. A quick, what's the town center district? What are the criteria in the town center district? Just use, setbacks, parking, and design requirements.
And some photos of...
And photos to illustrate that. And then say, here's where the Harbor Edge District is.
So you could pause after that first thing?
You could, except then people will be like, well, what about Harbor Point? So I think, I kind of, I think if, I think if it's short, if it's succinct, then it can... What we could do is take questions on, we could divide the question areas. Like, what are, you know, do people have questions about where we're talking about? And then we could talk about, do we have questions about town center? So that the, so that the questions stay focused on a particular aspect.
Yeah. I, I think it just works better if people get to talk sooner. If the audience has a few comments a little bit sooner. And, you know, it'll give you a sense too about where people are at, which is not a bad thing. I don't, I mean, I have no idea how to divide it up. I mean, I'd be happy to look at it, make a couple suggestions, but if there's three parts, let's say, if you can divide it somehow, what is it? Why are we doing it? What do we think the effect will be? I, I mean, I don't know. That's just...
Think about that.
Off the seat of my pants, but it's like, yeah.
Okay, so, um, so that, let's, we'll come back to whether we need another communications meeting, which probably is the right place to do that. The general communication, where are we on the website? And the frequently asked questions?
I looked at the website today, and the FAQs weren't there, but everything else we talked about was there. We should talk about whether we want to put Chris's document on the downtown zoning proposal explained, which I think I would be in favor of. We should talk about the document first, but I think that would be helpful. But the FAQs are not there, so, and I couldn't find where the most recent ones are, so where?
The FAQs, I think you filed it empty.
I may have been gonna put some in, but I think, um...
You put something up, Sarah, I think today or yesterday. But it would, it was like draft six point one or something.
Yeah.
No, there was a draft that we did, and then Chris did some edits to it, maybe...
And then there was, and then there were comments.
You were gonna finish it.
I know, and I didn't quite get to that, so... I don't know, do you want to sit down tomorrow?
Sure. Sure.
And just get it, and get it done, and get it, we'll get it posted.
The six point one was maybe the last one, so I'm gonna put that in, um, I'll put that in the...
Do we do it in the morning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do that, I'll put that in the folder right now, excuse me.
Or your family.
It could all have been my personal.
It's mine.
Um, okay, so you guys are gonna finish up the, um, the, uh...
FAQs.
FAQs. I'm gonna put them in the, I'm gonna put what I have as the latest in the FAQ folder.
Okay.
Right now.
All right, great.
Okay, and then we have the document that Chris, the one pager.
Was good.
One page.
Yes, a little dribbly.
We'll see if we're still one page or two.
The challenge.
Okay, so...
I would just make one comment. I don't know if we're to the point where we want to talk about the specific document.
Yep.
Like halfway down, where it's the first bullet, features of the new zoning, there's six, blah, blah, blah. One, two, three. In the fourth bullet, um, oh no, I'm sorry, it's the fifth bullet. All projects would require conformance with the dot design standards and review process. And the CHAS I would put, or the Historic District Commission. I would make a reference to that in that bullet. However you want to refer.
Permission if it's an historic history, okay. I don't know, Sandy wants to get rid of the acronyms.
Definitely get rid of that.
I'm an anti acronym, I'm an anti... Missionary.
That's gonna add a lot to it.
You can change the font size.
One of the margins, for the margin, and it's all right if it's a page. I have a, I don't know how you'd react to this, but I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, because I'm not as familiar with the zoning and the existing properties and all the details of it. But it seems to me that this is something that is beneficial for property owners. And we might want to specifically say that. So that the existing regulations, that I'm on the third paragraph, third sentence, existing regs are not compatible with conditions and needs of the downtown commercial center. And say something to the effect that this reflect, this creates current properties, most current properties being non-conforming, which means that they have to go to the ZBA for a variance or P, Planning Board for a special permit. So we're to some degree relieving a regulatory burden on people who own properties there.
I think we'll say that during the forum presentation, but I think there's enough in the two sentences you just read that we don't need to keep in this short document. I don't think we have to explain, keep explaining, do you know what I mean?
Yes.
But we will make that specific point during the forum, because it's a really good one. But I thought Chris did a good job of like bringing up the point without spelling all of the...
Well, and it also has, I mean, my comment violates the Sue Henson Philbrick rule of just the facts. You know, so it is a little bit advocating, so...
That's okay. Okay, um, so...
Oh, there is one thing, a specific thing. On the second dimension on other requirements, that bullet point list. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. On the seventh one, maximum number of residential units. I think you want to say four per lot, or four, yeah, four per lot in the TCD.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And the what?
Four per lot. You got me. Wash my mouth, that was so...
Just one thing to add, where it says, "All projects will require conformance with the design standards and review sparses" as spelled out in MBTA CHOD regulations or historic district guidelines.
Yeah.
Because half of the district is historic.
Do people know what the MBTA CHOD design standards are? Why not just say the design standards in section nine point whatever?
Yeah, right.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, and...
And then, and, and we'll talk, if you're talking about it, you can say, those are the design standards we developed to provide oversight for the MBTA zoning, but again, it's mad.
What is that section?
X, Y, Z, yeah.
Speaking of, this is totally off subject, but can we get copies of the current zoning bylaw? Would that be a good thing?
Oh, gosh, it would be great.
Yeah, that would be wonderful, Kevin.
I'm gonna, I'll send Kendra on this. I think we could all use a copy.
That would be really nice.
Freehold, we all have a notebook.
Like what I have here.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Yeah. Yes.
She can print it double sided, if that's okay.
Yes. Yeah, Kendra, Kendall. I'll ask him for it right now. Okay, other comments on Chris? Maybe you guys can finish that up and get that onto the website.
I'm doing my...
Thanks for doing that.
Excellent, thank you.
Really.
We actually know, but it's in, so Mark's got the map, right?
Map? Yeah, yeah.
Here's the latest version, which, yeah, it's... So we just added to this.
Yeah.
On the second page.
Yes.
Oh, you want to put this map along with that?
Yeah.
Like back to back, okay.
Not the, not the map that's with the thing now.
No, because it's, no, I mean, it's just...
It's the other one.
This, this map.
Yeah.
Okay, um, the last piece of this, I think, is, should we have another communications meetings? Probably if we can.
On Thursday?
Monday or Tuesday, depending on availability.
I am not available Monday.
Week, Tuesday. Uh, we could also do a, a...
It's disgusting, right?
But, uh...
No, I have to be out of town on Monday and part of Tuesday.
I feel like...
But you can do it without me, because we will have, like, you can definitely do it without me.
Yeah.
Tu- Tuesday's a pretty good day.
You're talking about during the day, Sarah?
Yeah, or like, or, or, Tuesday's actually pretty good.
What day is the week?
That's the second.
December sixth. So, no, I mean, Monday might be better, just because the fourth is really creeping up once.
The afternoon of the first, uh, can we post that? Yeah, we can. I think, I can do either, or it's better for, at least a few people, just to kind of put another set of eyes on things.
Sure.
Sure.
Presentation in particular. It doesn't have to be everybody.
My schedule's pretty flexible those first few days.
What about, uh...
So you can...
Three o'clock on Monday, does that work for you? I don't even know, but you need to be there.
Checking right now.
What?
And what about Gordon?
I think Gordon...
My schedule is getting...
Getting crazy. I think it's fine if you're not, if we just have a few people, we'll put a second set of, a third set of eyes on the presentation.
So I'm fine, I'm fine for Monday afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah, and just sort of...
Actually, later afternoon is better for, if you can do four. Usually better for four, four thirty. Let's start with four, and it's better for Peter and Brian if they want to try, I'm sure Brian is probably not. I might send it to him, he's got a really good eye.
Guy has a great eye.
He has a great eye for the...
Very good with the turn of...
Yeah, it is. It's very good. But I don't want to...
But he's also...
Close to the meeting person?
Yes.
Okay, great, um, anything else on, uh...
So like four thirty?
Four o'clock, let's say four o'clock.
Yeah. Yeah, I might be able to get there towards the end of it.
Okay, or we can give you a zoom.
Yeah, I can't do that since, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay, great. Um, thank you. I'm gonna pick one out, we asked questions to my latest one, it's now in the folder. Okay. Um, great, so I think that's downtown improvement. Let's, let's talk about hotels and inns briefly. We have the old hotel article, and then I think there was a revised inn article. So I think that moves us ahead. All right, here we go.
I have a, oh.
Yeah, this is, this came into the folder lately, but, um, so adding a definition, an inn, a building or any part of a building, look on the screen. Without cooking facilities for transient occupancy and having a common entrance or entrances, an inn shall have limited to a maximum of twelve rooms for overnight guests, an inn may include a restaurant, bar, tavern, and accessory recreational facilities provided they are also allowed in the district. It's not include a hotel, motel, boarding house, lodging, or rooming house.
Is that a bed and breakfast?
Yeah, I think it could say, oh, well, if you have a rat bar.
Do you put, well...
Yeah, that would be a...
Typically have tea.
Tea, you know, tea. Or a coffee bar. I think that's fine.
So I just thought we should take that it out.
Yeah.
And replace it with, on the inn, I think.
Yep.
I think, yeah, it's great. Oh, you mean the last sentence?
See, I put a comment there, you can see it.
Yeah. Do, does an inn have recreational facilities? Oh, provide they're allowed in the district. That's very good. And then the proposal is to allow...
Before you, before you go on for the definition, if I may, Sarah?
Absolutely.
This is Chris, Chris, you wrote this? No.
No, Mark, Mark wrote this.
Mark wrote this. So contains rooming, so this is like a single room occupancy with no cooking facility?
No.
That people rent out for short term?
No, this is a small hotel.
Like a hotel.
It's like a boutique inn.
Or a bed and breakfast.
Then it gets down to the bottom, saying the inn does, it does not include a hotel.
So our, our definition of a hotel is this definition, except it doesn't limit the size.
Okay, so this, despite putting the twelve-room location capacity, it defines it as an inn.
Right.
That's a good choice of size, I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's not S R row.
We have, we allow that up to five, I believe.
Six orders.
So, okay, and they should be allowed, right now, we proposed in the LCB, the town center and the Harbor Edge for the moment, with a special permit in the general.
That's all good.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
For this, good, good starting point.
Yeah.
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 Good job.
And add to off-street parking, and inn is one space for guest room. Um, and then, which is what we have for hotel already.
Yes.
However, what about, like, staff parking? Um, because you might have, you know, a custodian and a, um, a desk clerk and a, um, you know, personnel.
Facilities maintenance.
Yeah, I feel like that, oh, with twelve people? You certainly would have a, you might have a, um...
You'll have a couple staff, housekeeping.
Well, you might say one space plus one for each room.
Whereas an inn might only, most of the time, will have one person.
Couple people, yeah, yeah.
Maybe just leave it at one for guest room, that's what we have for hotels right now, and needed that.
Yep.
It would be one of my favorite guest spaces, you let yourself in. No, there's like, you get it, they email you the code and...
Yep, and you have a little thing to fudge it in.
Yeah, so, I always wondered if they changed the code between rooms? Between guests?
Okay, I've been in a few where I wasn't so sure.
You can lock a room on the inside.
Right, okay. So any other changes? So, um, we did, uh, Sue and I did think about communications for this, and we thought we would do it after some Q and A about the downtown district. And it may get lost, but we have time to hold another forum or a public meeting or thing on just hotels later. And so even if we don't get to it for some reason, we could, um, we've got time.
Well, we probably ought to have something on a bunch of the other, because we're still gonna have some additional articles that aren't downtown related.
The general.
So we probably will want to have something later.
Yes.
But that...
We should put together a calendar, the time is ticking naturally.
So kind of downtown related.
Yeah, that is downtown related.
They are.
And it was comments that came up in the July meeting, you know, people talked about having an inn, so...
Yeah, I mean, I think this is very much thematically related to the downtown. The thriving vibrancy, more people around, yeah.
Okay, great. Um, thank you for doing that, um, senior housing. So we have, um, I know Mark put into the packet, I fell down on this, the job on this one. Um, a revised, oh, still sharing, um, draft by law, I know Chris went through it and has some comments. So, um, should we just walk, walk through it?
Sure.
So, I've got it up on the screen, versus to add a new, add section two, a new definition of se- senior housing development.
Do I want to strike the word development? I don't use it anywhere else than, you know, why should we say development here?
Just say simply senior housing.
Why, why wouldn't you want to leave it, Chris? In fact, it is what it is.
Because they don't use it anywhere else in the zoning bylaw.
Nowhere else, right.
And, and it's sort of pejorative, I think.
Well, it raises people's fears about...
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All the way through on this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um...
We have several how, several senior housing definitions.
So I want to strike them and put these, put the ones in. Because the ones that, the existing bylaw are in the wrong order, so it's confusing. And it includes long-term care facility, which is already defined in the zoning bylaw anyway. And it's not really senior housing, so we should take it out of the definitions under senior housing.
We got development in there again, but...
Yeah, I started taking it out, I didn't take them all out, so...
Yeah.
Just, just to make it...
So you actually proposed...
I, I proposed calling it senior housing development. Chris suggested that I took it out, and I started doing that, but I left a few in just to...
So actually, Chris has gone through and been more specific, saying senior housing is housing for persons over the age of fifty-five subject to senior housing laws as... Senior housing laws are blah, blah, blah. And then the types of senior housing are assisted living facility, independent living, uh, and this care facility or a long-term care facility is just a care...
Continuing care facility.
Should say continuing.
Well, Chris, we're not, we're not proposing any of these other than senior housing fifty-five, right?
Well, they, these are all examples of it.
So.
So we also have to de- delete the existing.
Definition, yeah.
I thought you were talking about, forgive me, I thought you were talking about independent living in, in a separate living unit. Fifty-five, one person has to do, but none of the care that's provided down below would be.
So assisted living is actually a bunch of apartments.
Yeah.
Just like an independent living, it's just that they also. Have food services and personal care services.
The, the, the problem with that is that that requires staffing, delivery, it's, it's, you're creating a facility. And. And, um, you know, it's, it's not just housing for people fifty-five and older. So if you do just fifty-five and older and they need aid, they need, you know, visiting nurse, whatever, that's. They arrange for it themselves and, and stuff like that, but. Uh, this is now allowing for the development of a, like a commercial facility. And yes, it's for people fifty-five and older, but it's, it's more than just housing. And so. I thought, and I drafted this, this is why I didn't incorporate. This comment in here that we were at the last meeting, that we were just gonna start with. Regular fifty-five and older housing and not incorporate the facilities, that we would revisit that. Call it something else, assisted living facility or, you know, something else. Um, or incorporate all of those into, um, like a later draft. Cause I took out some of the other language. That was in the previous draft that addressed some of the needs if you build in a facility. For things like extra parking deliveries, better screening and buffering, that type of stuff, so.
So just to sort of stop there, just so I understand. If we had senior housing without amenities. You would, and you, so you age restricted housing, the, the, the property owner or the developer or the owner could have. Age restrict the property and get a density bonus. That, that's the sort of the, the, in that scenario, that's the, the. With pro quo, you know, that's the benefit to the town is you get a density bonus in terms of the numbers of units per.
Acre.
Acre or per lot or whatever, however we do it, because you're age restricting.
That's right.
Okay, so if we, and you get, um. It seems to me that, uh, so that's independent living?
Yes, any of them, but yes, it's certainly.
They're basically renting an apartment in a building. Could be condos, it could be condos as well.
Townhousey kind of thing. Any stuff we saw in Wyndham. Yeah, was, uh, looked like, um. Just small townhouses kind of like together. So, uh, right, some of them were big.
Some of these developments.
Yeah.
So the, the proposal right now as it stands is that basically we say it's allowed everywhere with a special permit. And let the special permit process sorted out of it.
Which is, I think, a good way to do it, cause I know.
No expectation of service. You buy it, you live in it, or you rent it, you live in it, and that's it.
Well, this is saying that any type of senior housing.
Yeah, that's. Danger in that? I just, I don't know. Look at the list of, oh.
The more independent, um, living thing we saw, Gordon, uh, with the really large units. Um, there were commu- communal facilities. So there was a notion about. Not just this was a bunch of dense housing, but that it was a quote unquote community. And there were, you know, events and. So there was a common room and a, I don't know.
A mediate room?
Um, no, I think that would be more an assisted living. Yeah, yeah. Or swimming pool or something like that. Recreational facilities. So there was some notion of community. I don't know how you embed it in this thing, but.
Really, the difference between assisted living now and independent living is that. In independent living, if you need personal care, you call for an outside agent to come in and do it. In assisted living. It's all coordinated within the facility or within the.
So you need a management firm to, to control the building and how it operates.
Sure, yeah, you have an operator. But you have a management company managing an apartment building too.
But you have a lot more permanent staff.
What is our goal by putting the zoning in here then? What is our goal?
So there's a huge need for senior housing in Manchester, both for independent living. And presumably for assisted living.
Oh, exactly. I think there's, there is.
Well, absolutely, yeah. People, if you, if you. Suddenly can't walk anymore or.
Oh, God.
Or trouble getting around, you have to move to Beverly.
Right.
And people are doing that all the time. And if you wanna downsize, you have to move to Beverly also because there's no place to downsize to.
How big was the place in Wyndham that you went to? I mean, how many units?
There were three of them, there'll be one too. So one was twenty-nine units and the average square footage was three thousand square feet. They were all three bedrooms.
They were big.
And they were sold for a million and a half dollars. There was another one just down the street called the Maples.
And an old.
In an old mansion and a bunch of little townhouses around it. And they were all two, one and two bedrooms, and they sold for a hundred and fifty-five thousand. And then we saw in a, a, an affordable one, also in Wyndham, which is forty units, I think. Done by Arborlight. And they're all one bedroom, so they all rent for, you know, four hundred, five hundred bucks a month.
So Chris, I. This is a tricky stuff. As a developer were to come in here and said, I wanna build senior housing. Which would be the more attractive thing, a independent living of just. Uh, for fifty-five and over age restricted, or would it be the larger full array of services provided? Which one would be more likely to be built?
First?
Well, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know.
Whether, whether it's a just a building where you live in your own, but it's age restricted. Versus the buildings you went to, which have community places.
So just to be clear, assisted living is like six thousand dollars a month.
Six thousand dollars a month.
Yeah, but you get a meal, you get your meals, you have the apartment cleaned, you get, um. Uh, but if, if, there's a nursing service there to give you your meds and stuff. So it's for people who are less able to take care of themselves.
I would think a developer would want, obviously, return on their dollar to make that work, so it would be a larger facility.
Generally, there are, uh, firms that just do assisted living and know how to do it and do it well. And then there are lots of people who do independent living. That's all. They don't do assisted living.
So I feel like realistically, I mean, an assisted living facility is larger. Uh, there's nowhere where one could go except the L C D.
Well, no, actually, no, there's, uh, there are system living, there's a system living in, uh, Methuen, that's only nine units. And it's very successful. There's one in Salem in an old mansion with twelve units.
There is assisted living.
System living.
So it has services.
It has services. They're not there all the time. They come in, you know, in the mornings and do all the stuff they're gonna do probably. Maybe have someone there, uh, keeping watch or whatever.
So I don't, I'm not worried about. Them proliferating wildly, actually. Um, I'm also not worried that they're gonna. You know, sideline become adult entertainment facilities or whatever, you know, worry that, that. You know, whatever tragic, tragic, um, thing might befall us, um. My, as I think about the zoning, my question is quite simply. Does the special permit process. Provide the right oversight? And, um, the special permit process does allow us to hire a consultant at the applicant's expense. To, you know, we could hire somebody, if we had a. A larger size proposal on our doorstep. We don't really know how they're run and what the questions are. We could hire. A consultant who would walk us through what particular conditions would make sense for this kind of facility. We do have a mechanism.
That's true.
Not entirely.
Expert.
Expertise with the various facilities we've all been involved with. For too long. And so the, the special permit process does allow us to hire expertise. And it does put guardrails on things and will get pushback. The other thing is, on the flip side of that, the special permit can be appealed if we don't use our criteria in judiciously. Um, and it can be appealed by neighbors or by an applicant, but that's, you know, something. And, um. You know, unless we feel strongly that it's not, shouldn't be allowed in a place or should only be allowed in one place. I don't know, I don't think it's too scary.
So Mark and I went back and forth about whether or not it should be allowed everywhere. And I think the compromise we kind of stumbled into was, that Mark came up with was. Different, uh, minimum lot sizes depending on what's the zone you're in. It also occurred to me is you could put notes into the thing, other things to protect zoning districts. Um, cause I couldn't think of a, a district where maybe the D district would be inappropriate. But I think the inappropriateness is lot size, not the zone you're in.
You think town center?
I think that's a great place for it, absolutely. It's probably the best place for it if you have the room.
So some of the houses, for example, that are between, uh, copper shed and the museum. As a friend.
Santander Bank.
Santander Bank, yeah, or, or the gas station, or maybe it's the upper floors in the Harbor's Edge District.
Yeah, they do have an elevator. The only thing that I worried about was on, was to Sue's point a moment ago, which you. I gave comfort on Chris, which is the scale of the thing. And on page three. Um, I think it's nine point five point two D. It says for developments exceeding sixty residential units. That's just too big a number. I mean, maybe it's fifteen, maybe it's twenty, something like that.
There was, there was something in the previous version that had, so I just left it there and then. Fiddled with the number a little bit and said, well, discussing, see whether people still want it or not.
Yeah, what do you think is the right number?
So what we've said, what we came up with was no more than ten units an acre. So. With a, with a, with some bonuses for affordability. So ten year, and, uh, so that means. That's gonna limit the size of anything. There aren't any five acre site really available.
Coral Island, you're saying ten units an acre. So if someone assembled a, a ten acre parcel, they could have a hundred units. Is that correct?
Yes, if they assembled to ten acres.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know where that would be.
Well, the L C D.
The L, well, the L C D is owned by only three people anyway, so yeah.
Yeah, but the.
Yes, that's right. And Gordon College might do it.
Or the Mac could be.
The Mac could do it, yeah, absolutely.
The se- the section D sort of gives me curly hair. I mean, it, it's, um. It just talking about something that's a sixty residential size gives a whole different feel. Than what you and I saw and, um, and the examples you were just giving.
No, don't, don't get me wrong, there are plenty of sixty unit facilities.
Yeah.
And there are some, you know, there's Brooksbury Village, which is, I don't.
That's not, in my opinion, that doesn't fit here, a Brooksbury Village. Or, or anything close to that.
Even in the L C D.
But that's just my opinion.
No, I.
People may have a different view. In fact, we have the correspondence from Lorraine. And she wants it everywhere, every size, it seemed to me. Um, so literally, that's how I read her correspondence. So, I mean, that is a view, and I guess we should know.
We could certainly ask it in a special forum. That should be interesting.
Yeah, now there should be a separate forum for senior housing, because it's really.
L C D currently allows that bizarre charitable.
Oh, any, any district allows a charitable long term care facility, yeah.
Is that right? No, it's like nonprofit.
Yeah.
We currently allow charitable or philanthropic use hospital, nursing facility, or sanatorium. By planning board special permit everywhere except the L C D.
Oh, my goodness.
About nonsense. We also strike that.
Yeah.
Um, yes, as part of the senior housing.
It's a community fil- facilities number six. So I think one of the rationales for this is we have this nonsense.
Right.
Um, and so.
Same as the downtown.
Yeah, I almost feel like by just. Maybe the simplest way to do this is just put this word very. Bad or badly without huge force, and just say, we're fixing this.
You mean, you're.
Just say, we're getting rid of charitable or philanthropic use hospital, nursing, care facilities, sanitariums. Yeah, it doesn't make any sense.
Everywhere.
And we're simply defining and we're fixing our sen- senior housing. Definitions, or allowing them throughout by special permit. And we've identified some specific. Uh, it seems like you were just saying that everything has to be, increase the setbacks and. We've limited their size. That's a, that's a big one, to limit the size to no more than two bedrooms for a living unit.
Well, actually, it would change a little bit. It says that no more than twenty percent can be three bedrooms. So just to give it more.
For every ten, create one unit, maybe three bedrooms, or you change that a little bit, to be twenty percent. But nonetheless, whether, what the details are, I like the fact that we've created scale.
Yeah.
And then at least one bedroom and bathroom, so we locate on the same floor.
I mean, that's sort of silly to say, but, um, this is. You have to climb a ladder to get to the.
They're all loft units.
This modern, you know.
Oh, my God.
Have stories.
We used to stay in a skiing place that had a, a pole that the kids could. Sit down like a fire fall, so you could work your way up like a monkey. No, we don't want that.
And there's a density bonus.
So Sarah, are, are you guys thinking about, you wanna do this also at Springtown meeting?
When are we gonna do it? It's been, it's been on the docket to do my.
Chris, I'm trying to think of, I think spent so much time with you talking about this, I'm trying to think of. Somebody coming in here wanting to actually develop one of these, even a smaller facility. What's, what's the inducement for them to do it? What, what is the zoning?
They can't do, they can't do it now.
You can't do it now, so we're saying it's.
And now, and every other town and city around here allows them in some form or other.
Yeah, at this density, this is huge if you're a private developer wanting to build housing. If you're a private developer wanting to build housing, you're a housing developer and you wanna Yeah, sure, the units have to be smaller, but you can get what? Uh ten an acre instead of one or two on an accessory, so um This for regular senior housing, I think we would see some movement on this. If we can discuss the affordability, I think you're This might be a little too restrictive, but um but I think you would get a lot of interest from developers being able, because I think they would find it financially feasible. You know, and think about it, you can, you know, you have a lot of You don't have a lot of options here on the North Shore. If you wanna downsize from that, you know, Nice three, four bedroom house with a few bathrooms and but you wanna stay here, or even if it's You're in Essex, I mean, you know, right around here, you can live a beautiful place that's new in Manchester. You know, they don't pay if you conduitized it um Considerable amount of money, but it'll be a lot less than if they have to buy Something in a non-restricted, you know, place somewhere else, so.
We talked about a local um.
Can you build it into this?
Yeah, that was my one thing that.
Because uh We If we build it, I think we will see a market from the outside. I don't know how you do that.
So the other is affordability. So Mark and I went around and around the Uh so I I would argue that if you If you have a ten percent affordability, inclusionary zoning, essentially, you're making all the other seniors pay for it. Which seems to be a little unfair, but I understand that it's an issue, so I'd rather see a bonus rather than a inclusion. So there's a compromise which says for every ten units, one has to be affordable.
Oh, I did read that, yeah.
But if you wanna have, you can have two more. If those are affordable also, so that would mean a ten unit Uh project could have three affordable units. Actually, it'd become twelve.
Yeah, I'm I'm very confused.
So it works. I read that and I'm like, yeah, no one's gonna do that because they're gonna lose money On those additional, why build the extra two when I can build ten and only provide one affordable? So no one's gonna um.
Well, you're not giving away the two.
Yeah, but still, it's probably gonna cost them more to build it than they're gonna sell them for or rent them for.
I don't think so, but maybe.
So for example, um I think um We might see about somebody proposing something, John. And uh they're only gonna do four units, although they could do more. So Um because of that extra, that affordable. So.
Twenty percent.
Wait, are you saying that there is such an instance that has occurred, Mark?
No, nothing, just, no, but um it might have happened.
So are there examples Where an affordability provision has worked? Around here?
I don't I don't know about around here.
Yeah, Allen Street, the the. Sommel Circle.
Yeah, there were two came out of that.
I'm wondering about in a senior community.
We've never done a senior.
No, I know, but like nearby. Do you know if?
Yeah, so what I had done was I had said for every five units, you have to create Uh an additional unit, but you get a bonus unit for every five non-bonus, so So if you do five, you get a bonus unit, so you get six. You can build six, but one of the six has to be affordable. You do ten, you get another bonus unit. You have to provide two affordable, but now you get twelve.
Well, that's the same thing, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, but yours was seemed a little different here.
Well, so I was, so I said that you also have to have ten percent. One of them has to be affordable anyway.
Oh, okay.
So it's a little bit of inclusion, a little bit of bonus. And I'd be happy to give away the.
Okay. Yeah, I think the way it was written, it just seemed that
It was very.
You get the bonus units if you provide the extra two as opposed to Yeah.
Yeah, it's very confused. It is simpler, I think, the way you just said. Because I was very confused about whether um If you develop ten units, do you Must you, are you required to develop? Are you required to have two of those units be affordable? Or no, okay, you just get to build two more units and those are and those are.
So somebody asked um about town meeting in April. And um I think we should, my opinion is that we should move ahead to talk about this and to um that It may, whether there's a space in the meeting for two Fairly large articles, I don't know, I think we'll have to kind of see. And it's because the select board does determine whether things go on the warrant or not.
Well, if it's not in the spring, it would be good to have an understanding. It would be in November.
But often at the next town meeting. So I don't know, you know, how we're gonna.
Well, let's see if we can get this thing cracked up.
Get this thing down first. So the other thing occurred to me on downtown and this and that is that we haven't yet set up to town council. Or the building inspector. You sent it down, we gotten any comments? Um so I think we should resend it both of And I would say, let's get this in draft and let's send it. It's a little bit backwards from what we have, but sometimes we get town council Too late. And let's get their review on this um.
They didn't review a pre- previous one, did they?
I know, but you know. I I would, first of all, I think we need to send a downtown one to town council so that we don't end up in March and saying.
The other thing is because we've been working on it for a while.
Yeah.
And people know that we have been, so we might get questioned, saying, hey, is town council waving? This piece legal or someone might question something, which I know it'll all clear.
Yeah.
You know.
But I think certainly the downtown should go, can you, you know, and we have a um They can weigh in on anything before the forum, that would be great. Um but uh and then maybe what we do is Take a A little bit, I mean, I don't know if this one's ready to go to town council for a review as well.
So this one is um Mostly Where the pit, what uh condensed version of what was previously sent to council with some Uh other additions from some of the bylaws. And rewording a few things, so. Um so it should be a pretty easy review by them. Probably not gonna be.
Well, we should probably dig out what they told us before.
Oh, it's it's the first I it's Um, yeah.
I think we only asked them about definitions, but maybe Robin did.
Yeah, no, I'm pretty sure the version I have is.
She reviewed.
Yeah, it's their reviewed version.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay.
Let me check what's what's.
Yeah, well, the one I have that I worked off of as a G P, you know, Uh files, how they save files.
Yeah.
That's that's the one I took and worked off.
But you had a bunch of questions and things.
Um, the other uh piece is that you have that the special permit Procedure shall be by twelve point five. Do we need to say the special permit criteria are section, whatever, is six point two? No?
Yeah, because in twelve.
It's implied.
Yeah, it's.
So then then maybe what we need to do is hold in January sort of a meeting to Find out what the public thinks about this.
The the on the senior housing.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see if we're ready. Yep, but um I mean, we're gonna move it ahead, whether it's in April or in November, let's have a public meeting, let's So Mark, I think you and I need to sit down and map out our next few meetings, getting ourselves to March first because these It's only five meetings between now and then. Something like that. Yeah, it'll happen fast. Okay, and you'll send the downtown one to the town council.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, okay, uh we will, I'm gonna ask everybody to now Really dig into this, we'll add line numbers and let's have a thorough review of this at our next meeting.
The one I have is, do you wanna include assisted living in this or or not? Because if you do, I would add backs a lot of things I took out of here. So.
Such as?
I I don't remember. There was a a bunch of other protections and things in the assisted living Verse version that included assisted living that I didn't think was And if this is just straight senior housing, there's a lot of others, just straight senior housing, fifty five and older. There's a lot of, a bunch of redundant things that aren't really necessary. Because if you're reviewing it under a special permit, you don't need to um Go on about uh a review of access and circulation. That's already in your design standards. Landscaping, a lot of these things I would pare down and you can remove Um just because it's redundant and if you're trying to have another article besides our big article, having You know, another six-page document is kind of old, that which is unnecessary.
But we're saying that senior housing includes assisted living.
Well, that's the question.
And under the current proposal, I think I read it that senior housing includes assisted living.
I I, well, that I had two definitions. Chris is. If you wanna have it in there, I'm gonna have to work on this a little bit more.
And the the things that you took out were on, like, just more specificity.
More specificity, more prescriptive requirements, and it was things that was in our, in the bylaw that you had from before. So.
Okay.
So it may not be that.
Let's talk about tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, can you?
Yeah, sorry. I I have a question about, cuz the Chris's definition also includes care facility. Which is more like a nursing. Yeah, which is more like a nursing, no?
Well, no, continuing care is combination of independent and assisted.
Oh, I see.
That's independent living and then you go to.
I see, got you.
You moved to Omaha.
Which is up up in terms of the level of care required.
Some of it's a lot more than we need to know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think to me, the big question is, does the special permit Give us the categories of the the oversight that we want? And I think it does. I thi- I feel actually as a general comment that Um, we see, my concern about special permits in general is we see them too late. So someone has to come So this is maybe a for a future, somebody has to come to us with a pretty well-baked plan. And then to get a well-baked plan, you actually have to spend a fair amount of money. And then they get committed to it. So Is there a way maybe for senior housing that people could You know, come to us for a, with a concept plan and a discussion?
Actually, that is in a number of There you say that applicants are encouraged to make a preliminary proposal.
They don't.
Well, they can't.
I can write it into, I mean, it is written into various other specialized bylaws.
But in this case.
So when you flesh that out a little bit, you're talking about have them come see us before they draw anything, the idea in their head.
They say, I wanna put in, you know, Sixty units. You know.
Yeah, this is about a bit of the wheel. There's language to do.
Yeah, and I just, that's where my concern, my question was, does the special permit give us the tools? And, you know, I keep going back to the house on top of the cliff. Um they were, they were so far along on that idea That we could have said no, but, you know, it's one house lot and, you know, it's just sort of um And if you come to us long before, I, but maybe we wouldn't have It also means we have to take that step really seriously. Um and you don't have the benefit necessarily of public input.
Um, but they, you have to do with them before the person purchases the property. Once the person owns the property, you know.
That's a little bit fire beware, but.
Yeah, yeah.
But why do, why why couldn't, why couldn't, if I had a concept, I wanna come to Manchester? I hear you have a zoning law that now allows senior housing in here. I wanna just Touch base with you to see if it's, see what the viability of that, what the challenges are. Why wouldn't we invite that? That would be great. As a matter, as a matter of fact, for all developers I've ever worked for, I've often said, just unfortunately, Let's go visit the planning board, let's go visit the town planner, let's just talk about what we're intending to do. Even though the private developer in there, it wasn't this, it was a private developer, had, they had something in mind and they just wanted to bounce the idea. We always thought that was a great idea. Then you get a sense of whether it's worth or not even going that town.
Can you procedurally require it? I mean, can you make the special permit process include a preliminary review?
Special permit is a.
Wouldn't you be, you were saying, I sit down and what is this, but my thought.
Yeah.
Sit down and talk about what my my thought is, my concept about putting senior housing in Manchester.
The concept for.
I assume they would look at real estate agents and the brokers would have showed them properties availability. Kind of juices them up, then maybe they wanna make that next step.
So an example is the, I mean The ADU that came before the Z B A. It's not allowed in that district At the size that they proposed.
It would be allowed if it was small.
It would be allowed if it was small, but now they've already designed it. And they've come to the Z B A and they've started their theory process. So to redesign it, if they wanted to make it in the nine hundred square foot Is a fair amount, you know, and they're kind of wed to the idea and they may be, it may be, they may be very good reasons.
They could connect it to their house and make it their two, you two. Duplex is allowed in the district, so they could do that.
They could have done that, but it sounds like if they had just, maybe they came and asked you or talked to the building inspector something before.
I believe they.
They did?
I, yes, yes.
They may have talked to somebody along the way.
They had talked to people before they submitted that plan.
And they knew it wasn't allowed in that district.
Yes, they filed, actually filed for the variance.
Right, the use, it was a use variance.
Yes, and knowing that. Use variances typically are not allowed.
But. But we see that times, we, you certainly.
You see that from time to time, but the zoning board has not approved them in the past.
Yeah.
So, for example.
And they're not gonna approve this one?
No.
Oh, that's true.
They're not approved.
Um. Okay, let's come back to senior housing, but um. Next steps. I hate to ask Chris and Mark to go hammer this out some more, but you're gonna hammer it out some more, and we are going to all.
I'm gonna. Need everything.
Come back and read this with a fine tooth and call.
And we will put the line numbers on it.
Line numbers. Okay, you guys are gonna have a long meeting tomorrow. All right.
Okay.
But thank you for moving that along. Um. I have one more zoning. Oh, no, that's the next, I'm gonna jump to zoning about the large ADUs.
Yes.
In D one, D two, um. So Sarah asked, asked, I, I met with her. And uh, she was gonna send us an email, she sort of sent me an email, um, that said she what thinks we should have large. ADUs in District D one and D two, and then we should put forward something at town meeting. She would like us to.
I wouldn't be opposed.
So why did we not include it in D one and D two?
Because, because we thought two families were already.
Was sufficient.
Two families are already allowed and um.
Well, but you'd wanna allow it only in single family homes, right? Because you don't want a two family.
Yeah, the problem is if you build your twelve hundred square foot. ADU.
Right.
And single families are allowed in the district, so you have a two family. With an ADU. Or a single family with an ADU.
Yeah.
You are still a large ADU. You are still allowed a standard.
Okay.
So.
So if you have a duplex, you can put an ADU there.
You can put the nine hundred.
Nine hundred, so we're talking about.
A three family.
But you can do that. So what we're talking about is allowing a slightly bigger one with a special permit, right?
Um.
So we're talking about an extra three hundred square feet or something.
Okay.
And you still have to meet all the setbacks and lot coverage and all that stuff.
Okay.
I think part of why we didn't do it, why we excluded them in this area is because. We were on the heels of MBTA zoning. And there was so much concern about density. And what would be built? And. Parts of D one are in a child and um. I think. That was part of it, just.
Yeah.
Not wanting to. Appear. Like we want more density, more density, more density, and that was a way we could. Comply with the ADU law, but offer something for the areas where we have acre zoning or two acre zoning and. Um, that would. Be a sensible thing. I think that was part of the rationale, but.
Yeah, so we, we have a use case now, which is sort of first use case and. Um. A use case was, a use case of one is not how we should develop policy.
Right, right.
Um, um, and my concern is to sort of around density. Is, um, this is a very, exactly what we, what we say we want to see. Which is, the kids are taking over the home and the parents are moving into ADU. But. Uh, you know, parents don't live forever, and then that use eventually uh changes, and I'm not sure it matters. But I don't think we should use, so thus, I don't think that we should use the, it's what we want as the rationale. It's basically two families living together, you know.
Same problem.
They haven't been related in this case, but eventually. Um, things will change, they'll sell the property, whatever will happen, you know, and it will be too young, and which is. Which is fine.
Yeah, and which, which is fine, which is sort of consistent to how some of the denser parts of town got developed, you know. The parents brought a house and then they built something for the kids.
That's old enough now.
Yes.
But my point is, just because it's the use case we want to see. To me doesn't justify, we, that's not the justification, we can't say. It's not always gonna be that, so that's, to me, that's not, that's not relevant.
I am so.
If I want to build an ADU or rent.
I'm still incredibly confused about how the whole ADU thing works, so if you don't mind helping me, I would really appreciate it. So. Okay, so let's say it's a single family home. They have the right, no asking anybody about anything, to put on a nine hundred small AD. They have the right with a special permit. So the right is, you know. Shaped by, by the planning board. To put on a large ADU.
But ZBA.
But, okay. And, but that's all, they can't put a small ADU on the big ADU, right? So they're only, and they can't put both a small ADU and a large ADU on one single family home. Is that correct?
It's not clear.
That's not clear. Oh, we gotta get that clear. No, but the law is not clear. The law is not clear.
Nothing to do with us.
You can put a, we believe that you can put the standard small. On a property where you already have the large. But our rad, so you can't put the large if you already have a small.
Ah, oh, okay.
Kind of.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, and it, okay, so let, let, let me proceed, so we fit one little pocket of ambiguity there. So, okay, so the, but, so worst case, what could happen is a single family would become a three family. Which is kind of allowed in the district or brand new, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So if you've got a two family, then what? Can each of those units have an ADU, so a two family becomes a four?
Limits ADUs under the state law, if they're standard ADUs, nine hundred square feet.
Nine hundred square feet.
The only limit we can reasonably put on them, them is a lot coverage and setbacks.
Oh, wow.
And that's the state law.
But an ADU is by its definition, something that's attached to a unit.
No.
Not attached, accessory to. Accessory to, okay, but there's only one. Per unit. That exists on the property, is that correct?
No. Not under the state law. The state law says you can place an ADU. On a property that is zoned for a single fit, that allows.
Even if it's a two family.
So I could put three ADUs on my property?
If you had.
No, cause you have a, no. It's accessory to your dwelling. Right.
No, but there's no limit to the number you could build theoretically. There's nothing.
That's very confusing. I'm not sure that's right. I haven't looked at this in a while, but.
Okay.
I'm in need of help here.
Number of, of protected ADUs, or what we call standard, there's nothing that limits that number.
On a lot?
It doesn't say you're restricted to one AD.
Doesn't say you're restricted to one, and so right now, I don't believe there's any.
Is it allowed? Is it allowed to say that you, that there's one ADU per existing unit?
They're allowed to say that for the large ones, but not for those, the protected use ones.
Uh.
Square feet or less.
So technically, if I had the right size lot and coverage and all of that, I could put three ADUs on my property if I wanted to.
Yeah, that's what's unclear with this, with the, with the law.
Doesn't sound right, no. That doesn't sound right.
No, I think what, what is, I think that's, I think you're gonna let one per.
Existing unit residential.
You might, if you have a duplex, be able to put one, certainly if you have, I think if you have a duplex, you can put one standard. And if you have a four unit, for whatever reason it's grandfathered, you can put one standard if single family is allowed in the district. But. If you're a single family home. You can put your large ADU. And then subsequently put the small one. You can't reverse, because our large ADU bylaw says only one per unit, per lot. So if you order them right, the, I think, uh, if you're talking about densities. That which, you know, if you have a lot, they sort of, they, um, that's the. Our, we, we made comments on that.
Because the law was.
And they did not address it. And so the question about other.
D two streets.
But some of that is a little bit unclear in the states.
Yeah, I did not understand really what you said about if it's a two family, so how, how. How many ADUs can I have if it's a two, if I'm a two family?
At least.
Same number as if you had one.
At least one.
Yeah, no, one, but not, you can't have the large one in our bylaw.
No, we're just not about standard.
Right, okay, but you can only have one standard. I'm getting two different answers here.
I don't think there's anything in the state law that limits the number of.
On a particular property.
The law does not say you can only build one.
Wow.
That kind of goes against the whole notion of what an ADU is.
Right.
That's the problem with the state law, the way it was.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So because, so in terms of going back to Sarah's request that we change the bylaw at this point. It's my opinion that we need a little more time to pass. And then, um, we need, um. The, the courts to figure out a few of these things probably about, um. How they actually shake out or get some. Clarity on, from the, the AG or. Um, our counsel on how these things shake out. Um. The other piece that's open to the, so the applicant in this case has a number of options. They can wait until we change the bylaw, they can build a nine hundred square foot. They can build a duplex, so they can connect the two buildings somehow, whatever is way. Or something, um. Or they could make it adjacent to their building.
Cause they got a variance to have their duplex on two, two buildings.
They could get a variance to potentially have it in two buildings. To me, I'd rather change the two building thing than rather than change the ADU thing. Cause we.
Cause we.
A lot of duplex to be in two separate.
Buildings. Yeah.
It was, it's still a, it's still an ADU that's upgraded nine hundred square feet.
Well, it also creates a kind of loophole on that it's no longer an accessory.
Well, as much as the D one, you can build a duplex.
You can win.
I write.
Right. So.
I think another. Specific fact of this case was their lot is large, which is not the case in most of D one and D two. They have a large lot, so they have room to do the larger ADU. Um, I mean, just lots of factors, unfortunately, at play in the first one that comes up. And it would be illegal to say, to put a condition that says if you do this large. The condition of doing the large ADU is that you can do no more ADU.
That would be illegal.
We have.
That would be illegal.
That's right.
Yep.
Oof.
So, um.
I, I like your last solution the best, Sarah.
Just wait a little bit and so, oh.
No, if you're gonna change the bylaw, change it to make the.
Duplex have two.
Two. Does not be attached, right?
Yeah, not be attached. So.
Be by rider, by special permit.
By special permit, I don't know. Where is that in this, um?
Me and Don will do that.
Yeah, yeah. There you go.
So right now in District One, conversion of a one family dwelling into a two family dwelling is, uh, with the ZBA and has no trade.
Something dumb.
Well, oh, is that God awful? All right, uh, first of all, it's a D two, the conversion of single family residence on a lot as a. However, a conversion of a two family, uh. You can't increase this height, volume, or structure, including construction.
That's ridiculous.
Well, it actually says D two and then talking about D one, so.
Yeah. D one is a little more liberal. Um. Than D two.
So. I'm not sure how to read this in terms of where it says it has to be connected, the single, single building.
I think it's, it actually is that you're only allowed one.
One building.
Building on a lot in the whole town. To bring accessory structures.
Okay, well, um.
Well, that would make sense.
Yeah.
When you think about. All these cases of dividing properties.
Yeah, right. Um, all right, let me, if we are in agreement to sort of at least go back and talk with Sarah and say, here's what we talked about. I'm concerned about this, if she wants to make a proposal, specifics proposals, I think I do that, okay? Um, sorry, I jumped ahead in the agenda, um. All right, um, Mark, can you tell us about? The one stop grant and the Brickside Now program?
The one stop grant we received. Um. Uh, to put together two things, one is to do a planning study for the general zoning district. Uh, of which we have, um. The downtown is a portion of. But we continue to move forward after, cause we, um, had written into the grant that we were doing visioning for the downtown. And we continue to move forward. Which is fine, but the general district is a huge area, so we'll still do. The, uh, the zoning for the rest of the general district, but it also included. Um, putting together a, um, a street skate plan for downtown and trying to bring. That plan to as close to twenty five percent drawings is what I've, um. Been told, or a portion of it, we're not gonna be able to do the entire downtown. But a portion of phase two to twenty five percent drawing, so we can apply for a grant for a construction funding. In order to apply for Mass Works funding, you really need to have a plan. At that level are pretty, pretty darn close in order to get that funding. So, um. So the dip had worked on a concept plan, so what we would do is kind of build off of that, we. You know, maybe have, uh, another. Uh, engineering firm, look at it within, you know, a fresh. Look at and say, well, these are some really good things out of this plan. These are a few additional. Things you may wanna consider, upgrade the palette of, of, uh, materials and so on and so forth and. And, um. Submit that and, and, and put, bring that to twenty five percent for a portion of the downtown. Including cert, they have to do survey work and stuff for the downtown area. They, they pretty much. They don't have to serve as the entire thing, cause that would use up most of the funds, but. Um, ideally, the, the second section of the downtown. Um. And so that's, that's where we're at with that, the. Uh, contract will be signed sometime in December. Which will give us like, uh, we can proceed in January. We have eighteen months to complete the project. Um, till the end of June the following year. So that gives us, um.
Not to complete the whole project.
Study, complete the study and the, the. Not the construction, cause we don't have construction fund. But complete the, uh, drawings for the. For the street skate portion and the planning for the general district. So, um. And so we have eighteen months to complete that grant. So, uh, we, uh, applied for, I think, a hundred and thirty five thousand in the planning board, you would commit. You had committed fifteen thousand out of this year's budget is the match. So they funded us at a hundred and ten, so in total, we have about a hundred and um twenty. Five, yes, hundred and twenty five toward the project, so. Yes, well, that'll be all part of it, so we wrote into that um as we worked through the streetscape portion, we would um involve the downtown improvement. Committee in the design process for uh the streets streetscape of downtown, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's it's right in what I wrote, so um I didn't. I did not exclude them from this and say we the planning board had some, we had some discussions about this before we even submitted the grant. Because you had to vote to appropriate the uh fifteen thousand dollars, so. Or to commit to fifteen thousand, sorry.
And I had a little color color commentary.
Yes, you may.
So I'm I'm part of the dip committee too, and Mark was on the phone, he expressed all this. He and Steve Carhart has spoken just before the meeting and day before the meeting. And since Steve called me after the meeting and says. Somebody works, what's going on? It feels like uh we're being taken out of the equation and we're not really a part of this anymore. So he was a bit he was a bit hurt, I I did tell him that tried to assuage his concerns. By saying that's not the case, that I know that what Mark intended is to have another designer look at the downtown and not provide. Ba- basically what uh VHB provided, the engineer provided was basically an engineering solution to sidewalks and curves. Without an aesthetic or a feel or a look or a touch that that it needs, so I I tend to agree with Mark in that case. But he wants to be part of it, he wants the downtown improvement to be part of it. I will say the dynamic within the downtown improvement committee is Steve is really the the motivation. Gar is on that, as is Susan Crosby and others, they're very interested, but they're not so much. Into the detail of the design is, it's more Steve, and he wants to feel that he is part of it. So I believe we're gonna have a little get together with you and me and Steve, probably early next week sometime. To just just kind of lay out what had been done so far, show what is beneficial to be reused again. And then to now bridge on to what was was I think realistically is the next best step is to have a real designer take a look at this whole thing. From beginning to end.
So can I ask an organizational question about this? So the the contracts with the town of Manchester, I assume.
Yeah.
And so Tony.
Contact this one?
Yeah.
The mass works.
And so Tony Barletta is really the final say on any decisions. Because he's the town for the select board.
Yes, all of the above.
All of the above, so in in terms of day to day. Uh supervision, that's you.
Yes.
In terms of day to day oversight, that's.
Yes, yes, well, I wrote it as as so this is a planning study, so. It is the planning board who is gonna be doing the planning study with a consultant, just like we. We did with Kathy McCabe for the downtown, or we did with Emily for the uh MBTA, so we'll we'll. Put that out there um for response, and then the the question would be, do I? And a lot of times you include these planning studies, you include the engineering component as part of it. But whereas we're already pulled out the downtown, we might do it separately, you know, we'll we'll have to look at it. But a lot of times you put out one RFP for a team. That includes an engineer, surveyor, design, landscape architect, who's the designer. And the planner who works on the zoning, so those three, those that team is what usually works with the planning board. When they're doing uh something like this, so.
So we're fortunate to have Gordon because he can.
He can do everything.
He can do it all, that's right.
Talk about that next. He feels like it's being taken away from him. Steve had planned on doing a small section of downtown, like from Elm Street to School Street, a tiny little portion before the carpet goes in. And that that's sort of the design, but now he feels like it's with Mark's proposal is being moved away from him. We're we're kind of not using the VHB's design documentation done today and. And he was actually planning to figure out how to finance this too, so. He planned on doing the whole thing, but now it's a different approach. Personally, one that I would agree is a better approach because I think it would be done. And and if I can say that aloud, if you're not here right now, I don't think that we should have Public Works Department be the effort. Because then it turns into a really engineering design. What happened before is that we were, we on the downtown improvement committee was kind of removed from it. We we our interface was with Public Works, they went to the consultants, we had to go to them to get them to come see us. And this was the best, in this particular case, it sounds like the designer would be working more directly for the town, for us. We have a more straightforward approach.
Is there not a way to have us include the dip?
Yes, I said we hope we do.
Yes.
I think I think.
Part of the outcome of the meeting maybe is to figure out how exactly that.
That's what I told Steve too, I think the intent is, let's let's figure out how we can get this done here. If it turns out to be smoother approach, more easy and frankly, maybe get something done rather than spending years and years talking about it. Then he would agree with this approach as well.
So Mark, you report dip, I mean, you. You don't go to their meetings?
I attend their meetings.
Yeah, he's there.
But I I report to the town ministry.
Right, but you have mentioned the study.
Yes, oh, I've mentioned the study. I've mentioned this a a lot with even even a year ago or something. You know, when we were putting this together, so um I think it's it's just that Steve is very ready to. What they did, he feels because he was the like the primary person. Very invested in what came out, and what came out is just a concept plan. It is not, it is based on the GIS. You know, info information, there's no real survey, there's no. There's no. Um and the palette, which is what you call like the benches and the lights and everything. Um and the type of materials you use is very basic, straightforward engineering stuff that they VHB just.
Very engineering.
Yeah, and so these are all the things that you wanna look at in detail. Um in in greater detail to really create a a sense of place for your downtown is what we're trying to do is. You know, the zoning is one piece of what we're trying to do, the the streetscape's another piece. Improvements to public properties is the third piece. Marketing and trying to get people to see what's here and find out what's here. You know, is another thing, you know, we we did create a on our webpage now, we have a visitor line on the head, one of the head, the main heading. You know, and we can build that out because we don't have a local, you know, Manchester Chamber of Commerce, so. You know, it's kind of falls on.
Development committee.
No economic development committee, you know, um so it kind of falls on us to build that out, you know. So so all of these things, you know, people say they want a vibrant downtown and want businesses to survive. Well, you need to do all of these things, there's no one silver bullet that's gonna bring enough people or. You know, uh to to keep all the storefronts filled, so.
So we were working on the downtown zoning. Is there more zoning that you're considering what?
Yes, the rest of the general district.
So we're gonna be, okay.
Doing this.
Finish your question, Steve.
We're going to be considering additional changes to the zoning bylaw relating to downtown?
Probably not relating to downtown, but relating to the rest of the general, remember the downtown Gordon has this up. Downtown's only twenty percent of the general district. So the general district includes large areas of areas that are quite a bit of residential right now.
It's down Summer Street to Lincoln Street.
You know, you may wanna, you may wanna incorporate some of those residential areas, properties into. The D district or whatever it is that a butts there because it's also mostly fairly small lot housing. But you may wanna keep, you know, a general district, you know, along the Summer Street because it's a main road. You have a mix of of commercial properties, so you may wanna keep a general district. And uh but you may wanna fold in some of the residential areas into some of the residential zoning districts. Um you may wanna keep a a general district for like the boatyards and where they store properties there as well. So you don't, you don't wanna completely eliminate it, but you may wanna adjust the locale.
So clearly, if they're we're looking at zoning, planning board has to be involved. Um I can totally understand that that someone who has worked very hard on the downtown. Uh look and feel. Might feel a little um.
I think we I think we could make it work, though, because we engaged Steve in this process here.
So I.
Feels like he he's doing something.
So I think you guys should meet with Steve, I also um talked to Ann Harrison because I think the select board has some sort of. Uh interest in the look and feel of downtown, which brings us to a brick sidewalk as our next discussion item. So I'm gonna propose that we actually have a meeting that's Tony and me, Steve. Maybe Gordon and Mark um uh to to sort out like whose responsibility or. For what what the roles are and probably it's gonna be a subgroup with a person from each or. To to lead at least this this um streetscape effort.
Facilities commission.
Yeah, street, no, streetscape path for.
Think that there is probably a wider variety of opinions about. Streetscape. Anticipate or want um.
Just the downtown improvement committee alone is. Some focus on parking, some focus on bump outs, some of them street traffic wise, other it's pretty amazing, and that's just that little group.
So a somebody like a Kathy might be very helpful at helping us to articulate goals. And then you can implement the goals rather than uh. You know, information and saying, well, what are we trying to achieve here?
She's been very good with with Steve and recrafting the mission for what the downtown.
Um so I think that I'd like to broaden the effort, at least as a to try to figure this out because I think it's. Will be more successful if everyone is pulling in the same direction.
That's a good idea, Sarah.
Yeah, so um but back to downtown zoning, one of the things that occurred to me is if there is a. Design standard for sidewalks in front of your redeveloped. Tan tan there bank. Is there a way that zoning can say, if you touch the sidewalk, here's how you have to. That, you know, uh here's the spec, you have to, once we have that spec, here's how you have to put it back.
Yeah, you're like, why can't we?
No, you can't put that in zone.
Can't really put that in zone, what you can't do is big data condition of a plan review and make every do it. You know, because usually they always want um some sort of. You know, accommodation for something that's um. Uh or a variance or they want, they need something waiver. Some sprick standards, so. Yeah, so so those are those are oftentimes uh where you can get the offsite improvements.
But if, let's just say cargo is gonna, you know, I don't even know how they're gonna construct that building. In their limited, you know, but there are lots of ways to do. Um they're gonna disrupt that sidewalk. So who puts it back and with what material? How do we specify, how does how does that, how where do we put that?
So I think. On on Public Works, once the standard is adopted for downtown sidewalks, then it's on Public Works. It's okay, you're, you know, gonna destroy this during construction, that's fine. When you're done, you have to put it back to this standard. So the business, yeah.
Yeah, that seems to make sense. That sidewalk construction should be in general. Doesn't it?
I don't know, you know, whether they have cons, I don't know whether they have.
Specify. Or anything else in in any of the bylaws. Would be actually specification of the design materials, the section, granite curb, the brick surface, whatever.
Probably have their own construction standards that they've adopted that if someone is, let's say you're. Developing a property and so you have to, you move in the driveway, so you're gonna reset the granite curving. And you're gonna slope the driveway and you have to reconstruct the sidewalk in front. Let's say it's not the town, just somewhere randomly in the town, they probably have adopted construction standards you have to follow. For the type of curving, how it gets set, the base of the sidewalk, how thick of a substrate. How you compact it, you know, all of the standards, what you put down for material. So subsequently, if the select, if we uh adopt. You know, have further discussions with them about adopting a standard for the downtown area. But then they could require that, I think.
Yeah, so I'm just looking at the general bylaws, I'm looking to see if you have to reconstruct a sidewalk, just for a little levity. No person shall suffer any horse or grazing beast or swine to run at large in the town or feed within limits of any sidewalk. Street or open street. Oh, just in case you were wondering.
Oh, it makes the zoning bylaw feel very modern.
Oh, absolutely.
Anyway, that's approached though about the sidewalks itself and the selection of brick and where it's run.
Yeah, so.
You can talk about swine.
There is a bunch of stuff about you can't open the sidewalk and there's some uh. Can't dig up any part of a sidewalk or open any public use, moving any gravel there for um that permission of select board members. Um you can't dig or break any part of the sidewalk. In the case you have to repair and make it the same as it was before.
So that's in the general bylaw.
That's the general bylaw, so it sounds like we're. Okay, so the next step on this is you guys are gonna talk to Steve, but then I I'll pull together and sort of talk about the larger issue of how we're gonna oversee this. To get the best value for the.
Yeah.
So, okay.
That's all Steve wants.
Right, right, okay, talk about uh the brick sidewalk.
So the brick sidewalk um. Well, it's it's first off, it's something that typically communities do if they're trying to like create a sense of place. They use some sort of brick um sidewalk in their downtown area, also in historic districts. They do the same thing, here we have our downtown is a historic district, so we kind of have to two overlaying, so. Um we also have a property owner who's super excited about replacing his sidewalks in front of his properties. Multiple with brick, um he has brought that issue forward before, I don't think it really went anywhere. Again, I haven't gone to the select words, but I don't know whether it's gonna. Move forward with them either, but um I have talked to a few of them who were open to the idea. Um, so I I researched uh and several of the communities have a voluntary brick sidewalk program whereby. If you own a property and you wanna replace your sidewalk in front of your house or um with your business, you can do so. Let's uh submit a request. You hire your contractor, work out the schedule with Public Works and you go ahead and do it and you have to install a certain brick. Uh, a particular thing and construct it to a certain standard. So I drafted a voluntary sidewalk program whereby um. Kind of matching similar um. Bylaws or or programs in other communities. Uh, basically saying that the historic district, the National Register's district and then. Two areas of our downtown um are areas that was. Allowed to to uh for property owners to do so. And uh Public Works has reviewed and selected um. Certain design criteria for installing the uh the brick. And so today, actually, I was down at a, I went to a. Applied house that um. Huge yard full of pallets of bricks and they supply actually many other communities with uh. Derial, so uh I brought back a whole bunch of samples, sample boards and some bricks as well. Um, so. That's where we're at. Um, I've talked to. The bike and pedestrian committee. They wrote this, the story commission is in favor of this. Don't know whether I talked to them differently about it yet or not, but um. So here we are.
Uh, so how does this interface with uh engineering plans?
So what this would, so these would be bricks that would be able to already be removed and if we have to move a curb out. They would remove the bricks and, you know, we set the curb and then. Put back the underlayments one way or another, but most of the sidewalk would already be completed, so. It would be kind of a head start on some of this stuff, so.
I know for fact that part of the fight of the phase two downtown improvement program that was done years ago here, the the uh. The curb line going through town, the main, the main roads down. Would be altered, it would be, because we've got a variety of streets with this way and this way, taking turns is tough, so the curb line would be adjusted. No matter where we did it, so that was whatever we do.
State road? We can do that on a state road?
Uh, no, 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 no. However, that's the the thought. Because we had, someplace we have wide sidewalks, someplace we have no sidewalks. That would be the thinking there. So what? If I may, Mark, just the the idea of doing this, we would have to do this, I would hope that we would do it as a continuous. All the way through the town and not just have it done portion and then whatever, and then another portion, whatever, that would look. Words, we're only really talking about one major road. Or that would be done, we define the downtown area. Are you thinking about videos can come up and do this?
Yes. So, so this will be a couple of years before we get construction money, if we get construction money with our first application, so. Uh, in the interim, if somebody wants to put this down in the springtime. You know, you would have. A bunch of properties already with brick sidewalks in this area. You'd be kind of moving kind of in that direction.
But what if brick is not the design? Uh, that we want that we, that the process comes up with. You know, that the streetscape is is.
That's what I'm worried about.
Is not gonna be brick, so now we have this again, a hodgepodge.
Brick, but it's a different kind of brick.
Well, this is what I would go to the select board now. And get them to select a a brick that we would use, we would use for, but you know, moving forward in this. Plan as well.
So what criteria would the select board use in selecting? I mean, you're gonna have a designer, who's gonna take this?
I mean, it would have to be based on this design consultant we hire, we come up with uh what we think.
I feel better about it, sounds like.
The type of brick you know, heck is really aesthetic, it's 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 nothing else. Because all the 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 clay bricks are all the ones where that maybe you get are the wire cut bricks and they're they're. Clean edge and and uh. You know, they, it's, it's, it's all aesthetics. Do you want something that's very traditional, historic looking like red? You want something that's mixed?
How do you tell, how can you say that now?
So I think that the.
Yes, yeah.
We want planting beds in throughout there and there in addition to the brick, in addition to the credit group. And then someone says, okay, I can, I can do this, I put it in, and then we come back and dig it up and it's, it would be. It really has to be well thought through, from 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 beginning to end versus my thought.
So my, that's my concern is that we've got a brick, somebody who's pushing brick in front of. Properties and willing to pay for it. Great, but now it can, it's kind of like the horse before the cart, right? And um. Because there, I think, are considerations that are. I I don't know much about sidewalks, but safety first. Aesthetic second or in that look and feel, and we may decide that we like the concrete sidewalks because we wanna have more space and money. For flower beds, just saying, whatever. Tables, benches, flowerbeds, street trees, whatever it is. And so I think that. If we're. Have brick in certain places, and I am concerned if the downtown improvement committee has not yet weighed in on the brick. This brick proposal.
They, they, we haven't talked about it, so.
Because this is where we're under, they, we're asking them. And their twenty-five years has been on the streetscape, whether we like what they've done or not, I'm not gonna even, I think they, by and large. They've done a lot of good work.
Does talk about concrete.
Absolutely.
Not a padded concrete, but just simple.
Yeah, and the other thing is that go, that Newbury Port's having a big, huge fight about whether they're gonna continue to have brick sidewalks. Um, now there are some of their brick sidewalks is this, the old historic stuff in there throughout the entire town and all that, but um, so. I'm, so let's, again, let's take, let's have this conversation with Tony and Steve and we're to figure out how we're gonna. Steer our way through this. I think it's great to to try to get a property owners to do. To pay for municipal work, which is, which is great. Um, but I've. I'm worried that we're the cart for the horse, but it doesn't seem that it's entirely a planning board function. Uh, but we are a part of it and, you know, arguably, the cart before the horse is the fact we're presenting downtown zoning before we're having the general district. So the same could be said, although I think. We've. We've uh, we've grazed that horse on the sidewalk.
And that was fine, yeah, fine.
So the other thing I wanna say is that. It doesn't have to be uniform all the way through.
So maybe it doesn't, yeah.
And maybe it's brick trim here and full brick there and.
Or concrete with brick around.
It's all fine, yeah, that.
So that's, but that's a vision, right?
It's a vision, it needs to be decided.
Needs to be decided and the other thing is that at least to date. We've heard a lot about a lot of pieces of downtown. Not one that I can recall was about sidewalks, except for their safety. Steve did, you know, like that they're. Um, but the finish of the sidewalks has not come up. Now, as the second we raise it, I'm sure lots of people have lots of opinions.
So we do face one thing, sorry, he, he, this is Mark's proposing this and. That gentleman who's wants to do it for all the buildings here, he wants this probably post haste now.
Let's have a discussion about how we make those decisions and whether or not. Um, look, I, I just feel like it should be deliberate, I mean, yeah. It does need to have, and I appreciate Mark's initiative to make this uh to move this thing forward. And put together some would look to be reasonable or designed standards. But I do think that. The fastest way, the fastest way to disempower, discourage volunteers is to have people go ready.
Yes.
Yes, so let's um. So we'll have a meeting and the, you're, you're not getting the grant funding, but this is, I think we need to have a little bit of clarity about how this works. Um, and um. And maybe the first order of business is for the subgroup is to just sort of weigh in on this and how it's gonna fit with. Larger visions, I'm not sure. So, oh, okay, great. Thank you for the update, Mark, on that, um. The. Liaison reports, um, I was gonna, I keep saying I'm gonna assign somebody, but um. I will report that I've gone to. Two of the. Town Green March meetings. March stands for. And they're basically working on climate uh resilience and um. Uh. As well as the, a portion of the cloth, climate conference that happened in Gloucester. On Friday, did you went to the second half, I think? Um, so the March. Town Green, March is a project of Town Green and Greg is now leading that effort. Um, the interesting uh. Thing is that we undertook a climate vulnerability master plan, MVP. And now MVP has MVP two point O, and in order to qualify for. Climate resilience future. Climate grants to actually address problems, we need to participate in MVP two point O. And MVP two point O is about communicating with environmental justice communities in your community. Of which we have no census blocks that are environmental justice, so unless we do two point O. We can't get grants unless we communicate with environmental justice communities, we're not doing two point O. So. Essex, Rockport, Manchester and Gloucester are going to team up with. M A P C and Town Green to undertake MVP two point O, which is about communicating. Climate problems to uh underserved and environmental justice communities of which Gloucester has. And therefore, by partnering regionally, we qualify ourselves for the future grants. Yeah. So um Brendan Zubricki and the planner in Gloucester and Rockport seem to be taking the lead on that. Brendan is the town manager in Essex. I talked to him uh yes, Friday, um. And he's coordinating with Tony and I wanna, I'm gonna go follow up with Tony. I see this um as. An important planning thing. Because the cli, I think that we need to elevate our thoughts about how, about climate and um. Understand what it's gonna take on a planning, well, it's gonna be a different kind of planning, I think, um, and. Planning and implementation, but. Um, this MVP two point O appears to be a uh. I don't wanna say a box check, but.
Yeah.
A box, a a process that we need to do to qualify for state funding. You went for part of that meeting, um. I kinda got it, do I have it more or less correct? The other piece of this in the morning of the climate uh conference, um, I had forgotten and I had not been paying attention. Apparently, there was some Harvard. Who uh. School design, urban office of urbanization. Who did a case study and I guess maybe they continued to talk about in the afternoon and they used Manchester as the case study. Um, which was quite interesting um on the concept level. The case study showed that a. A third to a quarter, quarter to a third of our assessed value is in there, we're in along the coast. Not surprising, which I thought is an interesting uh thought exercise uh or awareness. But then they said, so we should. Move all those how, those residences to the area north of one twenty-eight versus all conservation land. And um. And um.
That was the suggestion.
Their big idea. They, so I thought it was really an interesting thought exercise until that point and then. And they had some interesting um. Thought exercises around, uh, you know, basically protect things now so you don't have to fix them later. You know, that kind of. But they lost me a little bit on the gonna move housing. So, um. We could talk, I could talk a lot about that offline, about my opinions about that and um, and also, um, you know, pretty interesting. Uh. It makes you think about what is that tax base, um, and how much does it cost in terms of school kids, just almost nothing. And um, all kinds of other things, so, um. Uh, the other thing, um. I think that was the big takeaway that I had from the conference, um, and the two March meetings, and I will continue to try to. Go to those, um. So, um. Wow, anyway, it was interesting. So that's the update I have on that. Any other updates from any other?
Yes.
Yeah.
CPC is accepting uh applications for grant money. This year.
Sidewalks?
Sidewalks are not. With this, so there are three categories of things that eligible. His history things.
There we go.
Helping things and open space recreation things.
What was the second one?
Housing.
Housing, huh?
So the, the affordable housing trust is gonna go back for another chunk of money.
Yeah.
So maybe we can buy a house. And um, there are a bunch of other, the. The Parks Department is coming with a bunch of them. Uh, and Historic Commission wants to do a study with some funding also, but. I don't know if there's something any of you want to comply for, it would be, now's the time.
Okay, try to talk about a little bit about things. So we met today for how I ended up with. With Tetra Tech who's been doing the uh feasibility studies, massing studies. Police Department, Fire Department and for G P W. And the two sites, everybody knows, is the one up on School Street, just before Havela Avenue that I already view for. Belief in spoiling storage, the other one is on on um Button Street. So they went through their analysis and their options and their discussions about the possibilities. Of where these things are, so it was a really good, very thorough discussion about what the best ways to do this thing. It was everywhere, the Fire Department was representative, Public Works was there, the Police Department was there. For me, it's all there and there's, there's probably four or five members of the uh committee there. And the, we came up with what is going to be as it should be, the, the idea that they're gonna come up with. All the options that are available, all the parts and pieces mixing them around. And then a pros and cons list of it to evaluate it, and then from there we make a a true assessment of where we have to go. So we actually added one today about not. Build Public Works where they are, but build it in place, build around it, build new facility. And put public and put Fire Department and Police Department up on School Street and not really try and capture the site up above. Well, it was, it was a very good discussion, very good discussion. So it's interesting that Tetra Tech is probably not. Probably not gonna be the architect and engineer who moves forward with the little design. We're gonna go out for a proposal for our design services, competitive proposal. And I asked today, I said specifically. Are you from Massachusetts? And she said, no, I'm from Delaware, I'm from here, I'm from there. I don't know if you know Tetra Tech, they. They, they started off as an engineering firm and then they bought everybody, they grew by. Yeah, so they're, they're all over the place and not my favorite way to grow, by the way, yeah. Having been through both, both sides of the degree, I like it, but it was a very interesting discussion, they're very competent, very capable and knowledgeable. And hopefully will come up with an answer, which will obviously have to go through the select board and planning. Just for a quick note on the, the Essex School Building Committee. Because one of the considerations, as I mentioned before, is building in Manchester on moral. Your architect for that has come up with some concept plans of how you would add K through, K through five. Oh, basically a whole nother educational wing to that site and it just, it, it makes you. It didn't my blood boil like, oh my god, I consider that, that would be, that would be dumb as monkey, it's not good for planning. Not good for the regional agreement, not for, good for anything, not parking, I mean, nothing, we lose the tennis courts.
Oh my gosh, a terrible.
Everything, so I mean, I think.
There, are there proponents of that idea?
No, no, there isn't, probably, I mean, it's all. The I, the idea was, we. We, we developed it enough to know that we don't wanna develop it anymore, and that's gonna be our, kind of our, our way out of that approach. But there is still talk about K through three would stay in Essex and then four and five from Essex would move to Manchester. And work within the existing facility, that's something that Pam Vodes is working on to see if she can make it all work. It looks like, I will say, it looks like Essex site is the cleanest site. We build around the school, we destroy the school, we build the parking and that.
Twice.
That seems the logical way of doing it, just like, Sarah, you and the.
You've done it twice.
We've done it twice, it's pretty much the same way again, but we have to go through the exercise for the M S P A.
And for due diligence, yeah.
Yeah, for due diligence, it, it makes sense, and I think it's actually pretty good.
Yeah. One of the other things that affects with the climate thing, just cuz it's related, is that somebody raised their hand and said, why don't towns just. Whatever the just was, I don't know. You know, just that, rezone their downtowns, whatever it was, and I did stand up and say, you know, that. There's a whole bunch of fiscal, you know, uh, competing priorities and all these meetings are public. But invite, you know, invite people to sort of learn the variety of priorities and the process that people have to go through. It's um, you know, there's no just do it.
Just do it.
Everything at least in, in town, so it's not even putting in brick sidewalks, it's not a.
So I just wanted to, in the afternoon, they talked about different. Planning methodologies.
Yeah.
And they, and they ended up with probably the best one, which is one I always advocate, which is called muddling through. Do the best you can with what you. Doing anything else is just a waste of time, usually.
Well, it means nothing gets done.
Yeah, so, well, we got a lot done, yeah, all right, with that, uh, let's see, we had some.
Wait, wait, open space.
Oh, sorry.
That one.
Yeah.
I've got one, but I'll be quick, so they're working on trails and they are a diligent bunch of folks. Western Woods, Dexter Pond, Gordon Woods, Powderhouse Hill, working on straightening out trails and improving. Stopping a big mess at Dexter, I guess it's there, at Dexter.
It is a mess.
There's a whole bunch of debris, I guess, it's fine.
All this hockey stuff there and stuff, and it's.
It looks like it may hurt the bridge, as people, there's some bridge there.
Yeah.
Damn it, so they're on it, which is it.
Okay. Um, any other update?
You also have the Z B A, so, and I will watch the rest of the meeting. I just didn't take anymore. The driveway and the fire department, yeah, I understand the neighbors, I do, you know, I empathize with them, but.
Okay, uh, do we have the minutes in our packet? Yeah, I haven't had a chance to.
They looked good to me.
All right, let's take them up next time. And um. Next meeting, so we're adding to this next meeting a Monday, December first, working session. Four, yeah, Mark, you'll post that. We will have a forum on the eighth fourth, at the eighth, we'll have a regular meeting and our plan is to not meet on December twenty-second. We do have a special permit um, on the eighth, um, so.
This one. I thought it was today, so I picked it up before I went out.
Always prepared.
No, I'm not, um, I picked it up from Kendall.
Okay, so uh, we all need to get our stuff and it will go faster if we review it in advance. So, um, and maybe on the eighth, we will probably limit our discussion, or we'll have some forum feedback, but. Yeah, um, we wanna make sure we have time to. Okay, great, um, any other things? Um, I'll take a motion to.
Make sure there's no.
In a public comment. Thank you for being our uh, audience of one.
That Jane? She's busy all with that.
Okay, um. I'll take a motion to adjourn, so vote, all papers.